There we go. Okay, great. This is our second budget presentation, budget workshop to the city commission. What we're gonna do today is just go over the changes that we agreed upon last time. Talk about some of the the changes that we've made to staffing. Pay staffing salary and then just talk about anything else that the commission wants to wants to for staff to undertake. This is a copy of the. Oh, and by the way, the copies of the PowerPoint on your desk. This is the. The tax rate for the current year, and this is voter approved tax rate that we're proposing. And it would give us. A taxable, it's based on a taxable value of $3.9 billion. And this is. This is what I like to spend a little bit of time on. This is the estimated fund balance that we're gonna have coming into this year, 23 million. $347,000 approximately. Now, we are gonna take out. $150,000 from there to pay for the D I D building that we just authorized, the commission just authorized a purchase of. And. We also have. Though gives us a balance up, I'm sorry. Gives us a balance of $23 million. So some of the changes that were authorized by the city commissioner are included in this proposed budget are the. The pay raises for the rest of the year for the C D L drivers. The pay increases that we had for swimming pool lifeguards, but this is only seasonal, so it's not gonna happen throughout the year, just during the summer times. The pay increases for the P D dispatchers. That's the amount. Two vector truck operators that were gonna purchase, they were gonna hire for the purchase of the vector truck that we're gonna propose later in the presentation, 205,000. And then one of the other items that was discussed. Was having every employee that earns nine, eight or nine dollars an hour increased to $10 an hour. That's $90,000. And that's in the budget. So after we approve this budget, we will not have any single employee earning less than $10 an hour. And then we have. That's the added increase for the the salaries and then we have. Electrical cost of an additional $333,000 has been factored into the budget. So that gives us a revenue over expenditures of $770,000. That we have to work with and there's gonna be some things that we're gonna recommend in the budget later, they're gonna be. Taken from that number if they're approved. So that gives us an estimated fund balance of 23 million and then less the. The 120 days of minimum days of operation to 16.8 million dollars, which gives us a fund balance that's available to use on. On on capital items of 7.1 million dollars. Any questions so far?
And that's 7.1 million, that does not include the new vector truck.
Uh, no.
Includes the two employees, but not the back.
No, we're gonna talk about that in just a minute. What happened to my presentation? Okay, great. Okay, Nick, don't do that to me. Okay, now it's not working. Oh, there we go. Okay. So what we have on this slide, these are some of the items that we spoke about at the last meeting. That we wanted to fund. These are proposed one-time non-recurring expenditures. That are in your in your presentation. I'm just gonna go over them briefly. It's. 1.1 million dollars and it covers. A hard drive for the police department. And the watch guard video, which is 29,000. Repaved driveways for for fire stations four and seven, $40,000. Air compressor to fill the S C B A tanks for the fire department is 75,000. Extercation tool or hazmat detectors for 25. Trap traffic signal maintenance pop-up temporary traffic signal for 26,000. Library computer mobile lab for 12,500. Code compliance replacing unit number 970 with an F, it's an F-150 for 30. Building inspection, new unit to replace unit 120, it's a sport track. X L T, I don't know what that is for $30,000. And then police operations, five patrol towels, that'll be for patrol only for 378,000. Traffic signal maintenance, two traffic cabinets for 30,000. And the new vector truck that we spoke about for half a million dollars. So that's the items that we talked about, the non-recurring. One-time purchases of 1.1 million dollars. We also have. Shades for the tennis court for $20,000. And these are from sanitation, total expenditure of 750, $54,000. Public Works Administration, the building renovation, I think, if you recall, this was about 800,000 and. Public buildings so they could do, make some of the repairs and and with what the. They wanted to accomplish $40,000. A lot of that, all that's gonna be in-house. Sanitation to purchase side loader, 65,000. Purchase a new front loader for 210,000. Replace unit 518, which is roll-off, that's a back part of a trailer for 48. Replace unit. 512 and 513, those are wheel loaders for 66,000. Difference to replace. Units 524, 523 and 526. Lily, refresh my memory, what what are those units? Okay, those are the the actual trailers themselves. And then difference to replace 599, that that's another trailer? For 67,000? That's a rig, okay. So the total for that is $754,000. And then the non-recurring one-time purchases. Out of the motor vehicle replacement fund, these are all mostly vehicles. There is a my a welder model for $6,000. A side loader for 194,000. A transfer trailer for 212, 214,000 for the landfill. A tractor rig for 123. A roll-off for 135,000. Wheel loader for 180. And then F-150 pickup for recycling for 33,000. And 40 cubic yard compactor for $40,000. That's. 927,228. Any questions so far?
These, the pickup trucks, Gabe, are they, they're being replaced because? High mileage or?
The.
They're recycling?
The, that's a brand-new pickup truck.
Right, and so it it needs to be replaced?
They they don't have a pickup truck now. Craig, is that correct? Yeah, they don't have a pickup.
So it's not a replacement?
No, it's a brand-new one, just a a brand-new truck for that. For that department.
On that welder, do we need another welder or or is it? We don't have one.
That's a MIG welder 212 model for 6,000?
Yes.
So that's for fleet maintenance. Go go ahead, please.
A new MIG welder that the shop needs for the repairs to use. They don't have one and they want to purchase one.
So they don't have a welding machine at all?
They do, sir, but the MIG welder is more efficient and better for them to use.
So what are you gonna do with the other one?
And again, there is no action tonight, they're just presentations, so if you have any questions on anything, just please feel free to. On the following page, we have airator for the golf course for 15,000. Purchase a new beverage cart for 20. So that's $35,000 for the golf course. So the total non-recurring purchases are 2.9 million dollars. That's both. Sanitation, vehicle replacement and general fund.
Before you move on.
Yes.
Jeff. Do you have a vehicle to transport? Supplies from Sams? Is it operable? Because the last time I saw it was, it was in sad shape.
It was, we we got it, it was. Six, seven months ago.
Okay.
It's not new, it's 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 useful, but we.
All right. Thank you.
And if anybody's gonna talk, if you wanna just come up to the microphone, so that way people that are at home can can hear, wanna make sure that. There's no concerns about not being able to hear everyone.
Okay, and the next page, we have the. The health insurance proposal for 6.2 million. I did meet with Roger today. He did get two quotes from United and from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. He is having to work the numbers again, so he's gonna meet with them to get their best and final. And so hopefully they'll have something from him relatively soon. There is gonna be an increase to the health insurance, he made that clear, and we knew that going into this process, so we just don't know what that number's gonna be. And then we budgeted 1.4 million for electricity as we spoke earlier, we have about 300. $300,000 for the increase and and added electric electrical costs for the city. No, not yet. After we had the meeting with Eric, the rates just kind of shut up. They're they're coming down. I'm sorry? Yeah, they did the next day, and so they've been averaging at the lower of $5, so. I I'd like to get them under five if we could, so. We still have some time.
Could we? Revisit the possibility of hiring a consultant, make sure we get the best best possible deal?
We'd have to bring that back to the commission to do, so.
Okay.
The commission would have to make that decision.
What on in reference to this insurance that Roger brought up? You said there's gonna be an increase. Is this just for? For all of it, or is it just for one section? In other words, just group health?
He he's only doing the health, the health insurance, a major medical coverage, so he's looking at it for the city, waterworks and the airport. Okay, but it's just for major medical. That's all, that's all he's doing.
Who's taking care of the the general liability?
That's through T M L. We've we've already. Yeah, we kept general liability through T M L. For the others, we we. Like for windstorm, the city commissioner authorized us to hire Carlisle consulting, and he's doing the the windstorm.
What about the workman's comp?
Commissioner, I have to go back and check on that, I'm not sure. But but Roger was just using, just doing the major medical insurance, health insurance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and we have not done anything with this slide in the budget. This shows possible coless for. Employees earning less than 75,000 at 2 and 3%. And 1% for those earning over 75, so none of this is in the budget. Not unless we get some direction from the commissions to what they wanna do. But the other increases that we talked about for C D L, for dispatchers, for lifeguards. And moving up the employees from eight, nine dollars to 10, that is in the budget, and that's included already. So. These numbers, by the way, will change if we do something based on the increases that we did for the other employees, so. If the commission decides to do, I'd say a 3% cola for employees earning less than 75,000, that number that you see here is gonna be. It's gonna be larger, because we've just adjusted salaries for quite a few employees, so we'll have to go back and recalculate that. Okay.
Sorry, just went back to the last slide.
Yes.
Just for my. Confirmation. We haven't even gotten back the compensation study, correct?
No, that's.
It was not based on the compensation.
No, it isn't. There's gonna be an item on the agenda at the next meeting to actually hire somebody to do to do that. So we've gone off of our queues already, we've gotten quite a. A few proposals, so I think we have three or four, I have to go back and check. But we're gonna bring that to the commission for you, you didn't decide who you want to hire to complete that study.
And then how long will it take, again, just one memory, how long will it take to do the compensation study?
They had different time frame.
Yeah.
From four to six months, basically, it would look like four on the short end, six on the big.
So then hypothetically, you do the call and then again, give them another readjustment based on the compensation, so.
Well, you could ask them to take account the color that the employees got, so they can, they can use that in the study, so. Based on what color you wanna give to the employees, anyone you hire, you can let them know, look, we're gonna make this adjustment, consider that into your into your analysis. So when you do that, you know that they're gonna receive this pace, they can make that termination already.
Thank you. Gabe.
Yes.
I I'm just curious. Staying on the same subject of of employees increase. I know you had a Zoom meeting a while back with healthy cues. What came of it? Were you able to submit some information to them?
Well, they they gave me a report on what it is that they do. It's a health insurance product that they that they have. And it does require 100% participation from all the employees. It's a section 125 plan. So what I wanted to do was run it by Roger, have him look at. What kind of impact the section 125 plan has on the city, because generally, when you have any type of of. Deferred money. That you that you shelter that way, there's some sort of receipt requirement that you have to undertake or. Anything that you have to document, so I asked the company that and they said, no, there isn't anything. So I just want Roger to make sure that it in Texas. That's correct, we don't have to do anything, so. I'm gonna run that by him there, have him look at it.
Okay.
But yeah, I did, I did meet with them, there were three of them on the call.
So that's still on the potential table?
Yes.
What's the sec- section 145?
Yeah, 125.
That one?
125, yes, section 120.
I'll look it up.
Okay. Okay, the next slide is just an overview of the budget reductions by department that were submitted for consideration. The total requests submitted were 57 million, 57.9 million, almost almost 58. And the proposals that have been submitted in your packet totaled 52.5 million dollars. Overall, there was a 9.3% reduction. And this is just a recap of our proposed revenues that are included in your budget. It's 53.3 million dollars. I'd like to point out the the large, the two largest sources of revenue for the city are are sales tax and property tax revenue. They total 80, 83% of our revenue comes from sales and property tax. 43% from sales tax and 40% from property tax. The next slide just shows the the previous slide, but in greater detail. By category for property taxes, health tax, all the way down to to. Licenses and permits, miscellaneous sale of assets, so. That's just for informational purposes only. Now, these are the proposed expenditures that are included in in the budget, 52.5 million dollars, and that just shows a pie chart of of. The greatest source of expenditures for the city and its personnel services at 71%. So the majority of of pay that we're gonna be considering is gonna be for salaries for employees. And then this is just a pie chart for personal services for the general fund. I just wanted to point out that the two largest departments within the city, police and fire. Take up the largest share of personal expenditures. It's roughly 69% that goes to police and fire for. Personal expenditures. I mean, that's just an FYI. This shows the. The same information, except it includes all departmental expenditures. For police, fire, health, not just the. The the salaries that are paid to those departments, and again, it's just informational only. These are the the budget expenditures for the general fund. It it shows in greater detail some of the expenditures that we. Plan to undertake this fiscal year. And then. This slide shows the hotel motel expenditures for Loews and Fishes, Humane Society. And they're not paid out of the the hotel motel, just they're from general fund, but we just show those as separate expenditures. The current allocation for the Humane side is 287, 287,000. Loews and Fishes is 125,000, Boys and Girls Club is 140. For the hotel motel, those expenditures are listed below. And the one thing that we've added since the last meeting was the Texas Hotel Lodging Association for $10,500. This allows all the hotelers in town to actually advertise on our city's webpage that we get with the THLA. The the visit Harlingen Department has said that they are currently paying this, so if they are and we can use that, then we'll just remove that expenditure from the. From the hotel motel side.
I had a question, Gabe.
Yes.
In regards to. And I know I spoke to you before about the Chamber of Commerce. And then, because. I don't know, when we spoke about the Chamber of Commerce, how we're giving them like, according to the budget, we're giving them close to $40,000 a year. Have have those changes already been added to, taken away from this or no?
No, no, sir, not yet. We have had some some conversations with Javier about some of the expenditures. Now, there's some that that some expenditures that are undertaken for the cities, I think we need to keep.
Like which ones?
Like the legislative one, they actually coordinate the the city's legislative goals. Set up meetings for for us to go up to the. The state legislature to meet with with our senators and representatives. That's not a high dollar amount for what they do.
It's because when I, when I spoke to them on that one, you're talking about the government relations one, right?
Yes.
Basically, what they, what they explained to me what that was, was that they just basically set up. Kind of what you were saying, but there was more like, oh, you know, they have forums and all that other stuff, but I I I didn't really see how it was benefiting the city. And I know that we have lobbyists ourselves that can also do that as well, so. Because I I'm like, I was talking to Robert before and I'm trying to figure it out, because according to the budget, we're we're spending, we give them $40,000 a year. But then when I ask Javier to send me the information, how much? He gets from us, he sent me an email saying that the only money that they get from us is $28,000 a year, so there's like a difference right there, so I'm trying to figure out like where that. Extra money is going from, and if we have that extra money, I would, I would like to give it to one of these. Entities that are on here.
Well, the, I think the largest bulk of funding to get us from the. The visit Harlingen Department being there, that's 42,000 a year that they get from from that department. Then on on top of that is the government pay relations, but. What they're doing for us right now, for instance, they're putting together the. The the goals and objectives for the city, for the. For the the Texas Congress to consider. So they actually met with like the Port of Harlingen, the city, school district. They had a few other groups, the hospitals were invited, and so we put together what our legislative issues are, what we'd like to see done. U T R G B was there also, and they had had some great ideas on what they need to see for the college. And so they put all that together for us, package it, and then they set up meetings in in Austin for us to go up and and visit with the. With the legislatures, and they also had our lobbyists there, listening to what our concerns were, what we wanted to have them do. So they can actually start putting together a plan on how to get some of those things done. So I I think that's something that we should consider having them to continue to do for us. And and if you need some more information, we can sit down and have a. I can give you more information in that regard. But there are some other expenditures that that. That they have that I'm, I need to look into, then give you some more information.
Yeah, because like, I know we've discussed it, because like, I'm looking at the budget right now, and that their titanium membership is 10,000. According to the budget, the annual membership is another 18,000, and then the government relation is 12,000, but then, like I said, when I. What I'm trying to do, I get is I'm trying to get some kind of clarity, because it, what's on the budget? Doesn't make sense to what Avieta is telling me that they get, and that's why I asked Robert, while you guys were in the meeting, about that, because like if. I thought, I I feel like this has been in the budget, and it's like one of those things that has just been on the budget, and it's just there every year, and we just fork it over and fork it over and fork it over, and it doesn't really. Do anything, like we could be using that money like the like. The performing art theater or something like that, we could give them money or or another entity, but it just doesn't seem that it's. Clear.
We we are members of the of the chamber, and I think we pay $10,000 a year. That comes out of the general fund, it doesn't come out of the hotel motel.
No, no, yeah, I know, like what I'm saying is like. Like, I wanna give them more money, and I I would rather give the, like, say, the performing art theater, I would rather give them money than give it to the Chamber of Commerce. That that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Because that's, I think that directly affects, that's more toward our community and the people of Harlingen compared to what the chamber does.
Commissioner, let me get the, because Robert did give me a spreadsheet on what we paid them. And during that time, we had all these issues come up with trying to change the salary for some of the, so we got tied up with that and and discussed kind of. Put to the back, but I I'll get you some information on what he gave me, so you can look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. This next slide is for the special revenue funds. It just shows the estimated fund balance for all these funds from tennis courts, hotel motel. To the to the tax increment financing zones. Debt service and infrastructure. Any questions on on this particular slide? I know it's kind of. Lot of information taken at one time. And again, these are just estimated fund balances for these various funds.
And this is outside of the 23 million you presented many pages ago, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, and then this next slide.
Excuse me, I just noticed something here.
Sure.
On your special revenues. Tax increment financing number three. Revenue expenditures of. 570. How's that gonna be?
I'm sorry, which which?
This is a number three, tax increment financing number three.
Number three. No, that's, that's a fund balance. That's what, that's, that's not expenditure, the $530,000?
No, I'm referring to the 570, you're right.
That's, oh, okay.
Expenditures expenses.
Okay. The tip zone number three is the one that's over by the. By the the shopping mall, and that has a few expenditures built in. When the, when the city built the streets for the. For. The Sams and that area around Harlingen Heights and Horizon and those those streets. That zone agreed to reimburse the city for some of those expenditures, for actually all those expenditures. So part of that, 570 is part of that. There are also some other.
But that's an expense.
Yeah, it's an expense. Yeah.
So even though there hasn't been a meeting in over three years or whatever. That 570 is gonna. It's a reoccurring expense?
Because it's an obligation, Commissioner, that that.
For how long?
For the life of the of the debt.
Oh, God, that's right.
Yeah. But that's, that that the city incurred debt to build the roads, and so they're gonna reimburse us for part of that, but I think there's a couple of other expenditures that they're making. Did we call him what the 570 is for? It's for the streets.
So the 570 is just going into the general fund?
It's going into the INS to to reimburse us for that, because we issued debt.
Yeah, so it's.
Yeah, so it's literally going from one entity back to us.
Yes. Okay, the next slide shows a proposed budget, the enterprise funds. The Miss Palatorium, the Lantil, Arts and Heritage Museum, and the golf course. We're still, as you can see, we're still struggling with the golf course, but we're hoping that once we get through the all the pandemic and then we get the renovations completed, that that'll actually come up. Any questions on this particular slide?
Yeah, the golf course used to lose about four hundred thousand a year. What are we losing now?
It's probably run the same, Commissioner. Okay, the next slide shows the proposed budget, the the for the motor vehicle warehouse and the health insurance. That just shows the the expenditures that we project for the health insurance and for the motor vehicle warehouse. The next slide shows the proposed budget for the general fund, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds. Shows up projected revenues, the expenditures, and then just the estimated fund balance for those particular funds. This is mostly for informational purposes only. This last slide, I'd like to spend some time on. This is what we show that the Humane Society receives right now, the two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. They did ask for additional funding. I'm proposing that we increase our allocation by a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars to get them to three eighty seven. It's not what they wanted, but it's it's a pretty good size increase. And I'm also asking that we set aside sixty two thousand dollars for marketing staff for the public information officer. Now that, we need that sixty two thousand dollars to offer someone a forty thousand dollar salary. That's based on all the other like our social security workers company, we have to pay the health insurance. There may be some savings there, because we normally budget for hiring somebody with a family that has the Pinnacle coverage, so we budget the health insurance at the higher amount. But if it's just someone who's just single, then we won't, we'll have about sixteen thousand dollars savings in that sixty two thousand dollar number.
So this PIO marketing staff, is this a new person?
Yes, it'll be a new person.
A new position?
Yes.
Okay, to assist our current PIO.
Well, to do a couple of things. One is also, we just approved the resolution a few meetings ago, stating that we wanted to start to broadcast our city commission meetings. So this person will hopefully help with that as well. Run them, run the programs to actually edit the film, get it ready, and send it off to the Spectrum, actually do that for the city commission.
And this would come, though, out of that special fund design?
No, sir, we we can't pay for salaries out of the 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 fund that we have established for the PEG channel. We can only use that for equipment.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. And then the
Before you go to the next slide, there is another one.
No, this is the last one.
If you can find another hundred thousand for the Humane Society, somewhere down the line, please look into that. Right now, you're looking at a hundred thousand. I'm asking to see if you can find another hundred thousand.
Okay. Okay, and then then the the final one, I'll look at the commission, then the final one is for a part-time marketing person. We're looking at possibly reaching out to some of our agencies that we find to see if we might be able to partner with some of their marketing staff that they have on board. If they can, perhaps we can use some of this to pay for part of the marketing efforts. If they say no, then we can perhaps use this to hire a part-time person and pay them eighteen dollars an hour to do marketing for us. But it would have to be somebody who's familiar with some of the the later or the newer what is it, avenues that younger people like to use. I can tell you right now, that is not me, because I have no clue how a lot of those work.
Look at me, bro.
No, ma'am, not that one. No.
So my question is like, what do you guys think? I think we need to really engage with the community more with our marketing and how we present the city. So I don't know. Honestly, I don't think, I don't know if just one full-time person would cut it. I look at all the other cities, like I see Edinburgh, I see Macallan, I see West, I even see San Bernardino, and they're doing a lot better job than we're doing right now. And I I think we really need to push that, because we have staff here, and they do an incredible job for the city, but nobody knows about it, because we we do put out some stuff, but we don't put out, we we don't do it in as many avenues that are available to us. And I I think, like, with all the events that we we put down, like this, like Alexis did, the Downtown at Sundown, and we have Center with the Freedom Fest, and we have Real Fest coming up. We're not, I don't think, I don't feel that as a whole, we're promoting ourselves as much as we should, at least the city. And now that we're gonna have the channel, we're gonna, and usually I could see that would be a budget restraint, because we have to buy equipment and all that stuff, but now that we found the PEG fund, we don't have to worry about the equipment, because that funding is directly for that, and we just have to worry about the salaries. So I I want your guys' opinion, because now we really can't talk about it outside of here. So do you guys think that we should be going there, or do you think this would be enough, or what do you guys think?
Once again, trust the management.
He just said he doesn't know about social media. He just said he doesn't know about social media.
I I did say that.
But people within the company here who understand social media.
Yes, but
But just trust the management.
That works some of the time. I don't think it's working right now. But so I I honestly want your guys' opinion, because I I think we need to do a lot more than what we're doing right now. I I want us to push the city of Harlingen, we we have the, we had the history of being the capital of the of the valley, and I think over the years, we've fallen from that a little bit. And that's some of the feedback that I got from my town hall that I had earlier this week, that a lot of, some of the people here in town feel that we're stagnant, that we're not moving and stuff like that. And I think we need to change the you know, they say perception is reality. Okay, and that's, I think that's what we need to do. We need to change the perception of Harlingen, that we're not just a retirement community here in Harlingen, we need to change it, that all the great festivals that our staff is putting, putting out, all the great work that our Public Works Department is doing, the parks is doing, we need to promote that and promote that. And I don't think just one person is enough, because I mean, we need to get out there, we need to show the people what we got. And I don't think that we're we're doing that, so. I feel like I'm the one talking.
No, here's my take. Okay, and I don't want to be negative, but I don't have a choice here. On twenty twenty one, when you and I were running in February, there was an article put out on you, on Yahoo, top fifty most miserable cities to live in. Harlingen was in the top fifty. This past February, twenty twenty two, we're in the top ten. Now, if this person or a little bit more can get us off of that top fifty and remove us completely, I'm all for it. Because we're going backwards, and we want to move forward. I'm all for it.
So what what was the criteria of that list?
I tell you what, I sent it to Gabe, I'll find the email, and I'll forward that to you.
I would appreciate that, because I'm guessing, you know, when I see these lists, like US News and World Report and all that, they include education. They include the amount of high-stud undergraduates, bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, doctorates. They include access to healthcare, they include employers and high-paid employees and all that sort.
I want to be removed off the negativity list nationwide.
I agree.
I'll find that list, I'll find that email that I sent Gabe.
Yeah, please, I'm just curious what the criteria.
And Mike, it's not just about the list, like, I mean, that's a good point he brought. It's not just about the list, it's about the perception that a lot of people in town have. That that, you know, we're stagnant, that we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. We need, like I said, we need to change the perception of that. And it's it's kind of sad that we're the size of our city, we only have one person that's in charge of public relations. I mean, I mean, that's that's kind of, it boggles the mind, we have all these things going on, and we're having to rely, in other words, I shouldn't have to I'm a city commissioner, and when I know something is coming to town, or when something is is happening, I should be one of the first ones to know or get information, but unfortunately, I don't, I end up having to hear about what's coming to Harlingen or something like that from Facebook, from Explorer, Harlingen, that's where I get information. Oh, we're getting this, okay, cool. And it shouldn't be like that. We're supposed to control the narrative, and we're not controlling the narrative as a city, and I think that's doing us harm.
I I agree with Commissioner Perez. I think that we need a communications slash video department and and not just be on one individual, but I know I have spoken with with Gabe on this, and I think maybe partnering with trying to trying to find more money and do it responsibly, maybe we can share in the cost with other other departments that need the same promoting that the city of Harlingen does. And if we can do that, then then maybe this this, I I think that's kind of what you were trying to do, right, with this, this would be like half or or try to share in that expense with this additional part-time person.
Or at least pay for the time they would spend here helping us with any type of of marketing.
Yeah, we definitely need to do more, because Rini's right, you know, our our staff does a phenomenal job, and and they do wonderful work on different projects that Rini tries to promote on on his Facebook page, but not a lot of people know about that, and I think it goes beyond just social media. And we we talked about this at the town hall, there was a lot of individuals that were there that were not online, not looking at the internet and not on social media. So I think this individual, not so much just on these platforms for the younger generation, but also to be out in the community, engaged in the community, maybe visiting churches, visiting different organizations, and letting them know what the city of Harlingen has to offer. There's a lot that that that, you know, that we do with COVID vaccines, people that are not online, they might not know that that's that, you know, that that's available to them. So I think it is about social media, because it's twenty twenty two, but we can't forget about the our constituency that's not online. So I do think that this is a task that's bigger than one person, and it seems that other municipalities have a staff, not just one person. And so to make sure that she can, you know, that that department is successful, we need to make sure that their staff to you know, staffed appropriately, and that's kind of what this study should go to as well, that we're we're looking at to see if we're lacking in that department. But what do you, what do you think, Commissioner Lopez?
I I completely agree with you, Commissioner Perez. My concern is what is enough, right? And so I think the Commissioner brought up an excellent point in the stabbing study, because you know, three people or two and a half people to me doesn't seem like enough, right? So, but what is enough? Four, five people, six people, seven people, twelve people, right? And then what resources on top of that? And so I think if you and or Gabe wanted to bring forth to this commission a plan, right, like look at comparisons, look at the cities you do like, and what does their team look like, right? Then that's something for this mission to consider. I just don't want to take a shot in the dark, and then we misspent money, or, you know, we did put it where we should have, but I one hundred percent agree with you. I just want a plan moving forward.
Yeah, because like, what I noticed, like, I I've seen, like, from other, like, Bar and then Edinburgh and stuff like that, there, the structure that they have, like, the way we have it, like, we have MIS, and we have, you know, Edema and stuff like that. In in some, some of the other cities, what they do is they combine them in a way, not all MIS, but a little bit separate, but so I think you're right, we we need to climb, I think that's gonna involve some kind of restructuring in in what we have, and I would advise, and I would hope that or I would suggest that we, well, Gabe, like, you started looking at how, like, say, the, I'm a I'm a teacher. So what teachers do is we steal things, not literally, but what I mean is like, what I
He didn't mean that.
What I mean is, we steal ideas.
There you go.
If with if if one teacher has a great idea and it's working for their classroom, then hey, I like your idea, I'm taking it, I'm gonna use it for my classroom, and I'm going to shape it for for my kids in my classroom. And I think that's something that we adhere in in that we have to do. We have to see what Macallan does, Macallan's doing great right now with their advertising, with the promoting, what Edinburgh is doing, and we got to see how they are, they're structured, and we need to steal what works for them, we bring it over here, and then just like this is our, like, this was our, you know, classroom, we shape it to fit our city. And so I think we need to start doing that.
We steal it, and then we do it better.
Yes.
Better.
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 Okay, this is all I had.
No, I I concur. I I think, as Daniel pointed out, figure out what needs to be done, and then build a team to meet the needs, rather than just say, well, three more people would be awesome. Maybe second one would be better, mom.
Better awesome, my new term.
Better awesome. Okay, I think this is, this is a good conversation that we're that we're having, and then maybe we can, we can get someone to look at like Commissioner Perez and Lopez mentioned, how they're doing it in other other cities and and what their staff looks like, because I do think, I'm not sure what the turnaround will be for this study, and I want to be able to budget at least for what we think. So even though we're not gonna have that figure, we need to, we do need to increase to increase the budget, we have to, we need to find where we can save in other areas. And we need to to, I I do think I agree with with Rini that we need to increase it more so than what has been presented.
Okay.
But I don't know what that number is just yet.
Okay, well, we can, we can try to find some parameters for cities our size that that use social media a lot more than we do, and so we can, we can do that.
But just like you, Norma said, remember, it's not just social media, because I remember, remember when we were at the meeting on Tuesday, those, a lot of those, you know, individuals, or some of those individuals, especially the older generation, they don't have social media, they don't want to get online. So Norma's right, we need to reach out to these, to the residents that are not on social media, are not internet, and let them know, like, see, even simple, something simple, like she suggested, like, just knowing what district you're in. I mean, we need to do a lot better job in just reaching out and going out there and doing that.
We can always go back to block walk.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna have an item on the agenda for next meeting, tax rate, is that correct, Robert?
Yes.
The tax rate, okay, so we'll have to do that at least. Okay.
So one other thing, and and I wanted to see, there was Mr. King Benia. Did you want to address the commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Come on up.
Presentation, I'd love to go over. All right, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I want to also thank my few of my board of directors for being here today, Dr. Jerry Baratas, Delic of Osasuna, Colleen Willis, and Lillian Kim. Thank you for waiting patiently with with me, and thank you for for the time. So I'm the executive director for the Humane Society of Harlingen, I've been there since February of twenty twenty. It was a fun time to start, everything went out the window, right? So one exciting thing about what we've done the last couple of years is fundamentally transform ourselves from being that dog pound up on Markowski to being a community resource center. So just to get a little bit of context about what things we do and the way we trans, or the things that we moved away from doing. This is the old way, and this is actually still the way that most shelters in the valley, in fact, all other shelters besides the Humane Society of Harlingen, perform their job. So unsterilized, unvaccinated animals reproduce all year while remaining vectors for disease, and of course, unwanted litters. Animal Patrol has to pick them up. Goods Americans pick them up, they bring them to the local shelter. The strays get picked up, that the strays that are picked up and brought to the shelter is massively overcrowded. The vast majority of them would get euthanized, and there are no resources because of that to vaccinate them or sterilize them. So the few that manage to make it out alive end up going to homes unsterilized and unvaccinated. Inevitably, animals get out, and what do they do? They reproduce, and there's a lack of access to affordable veterinary care, as we all know, for pet owners, it's pretty expensive to take care of pets sometimes. So the cycle continues, and that's the taxpayer-funded problem that has persisted for decades and decades and still persists everywhere else except for the city of Harlingen. It's a taxpayer-funded problem. What we did here was do things the right way. Starting a few years ago, we fundamentally transformed everything that we did. We started focusing on aiming at the base of the fire, rather than reacting to the animals that were already in our shelter. We're proactively trying to keep them out and reduce that stray overpopulation by granting people affordable access to basic veterinary care. So stray population will steadily decrease. Animal control call volume will gradually decrease due to fewer strays and proactive community-based shelter programs such as fostering, more adoption programs, things like that, more educational awareness. And animals that need to be brought to the shelter are vaccinated upon arrival and scheduled for stray neuter. And animals that need to be brought to the shelter are vaccinated upon arrival and scheduled for spay neuter. The vast majority of the animals find live outcomes through adoption, foster, rescue, and euthanasia is reserved solely for when it's absolutely necessary. And those animals that go home adopted are sterilized and vaccinated, so they're no longer vectors for disease or unwanted litters. So increasing public access to veterinary care, which is what we've done over the last couple of years. Um ensures that the community is safer and healthier and the population humanely decreases. And the cycle will start to continue in a positive manner. That is a taxpayer-funded solution, and that is what we're currently practicing at the Humane Society of Harlingen. So this is a bit of a a report card. Um I'll just give you the larger view. Uh but so these are all the things that we do. The first column with all the check marks, that great report card, that's us. That's the Humane Society of Harlingen. The one next door is Cameron County's Animal Shelter and uh so it's pretty bad report card. And the one in the far corner is Palm Valley Animal Society. And uh that below is their funding. Everybody's funding approximate per animal. So taxpayer contribution per animal for us is works out to about seventy-one dollars per animal. The actual cost of caring for each animal is closer to two hundred and sixty-five dollars per animal. So that includes the vaccination, the spay neuter procedure, the staff time to care for it, the food, all that stuff. And so you see that Cameron County Animal Shelter gets about the same uh dollar amount per animal, but they fail in all categories. And uh they have fewer than half the animals that we take in. Uh Palm Valley gets what we're looking for. Um as far as funding goes, but uh they fail to meet the criteria of of spaying neutering their animals and they also are not uh no-kill shelter. And on top of that, um. This is the service to the community. So it might sort of seem like we're just focusing on what's inside the shelter, but really it's about what we do outside the four walls of our tiny little shelter. So our service to the community is really also about protecting what's in the shelter, right? So our monthly wellness clinics, over the last two and a half years. Um COVID didn't slow us down. Uh we've uh vaccinated um and served about ten thousand families. Um throughout the city of Harlingen and beyond, throughout drive-through clinics. Um we've also offered low-cost spay neuter. Two to three days per week at our shelter, depending on the vet schedule that we we fly down from Houston. And um. We're on track to to breaking uh twenty-five hundred surgeries um in twenty twenty-two. And since its inception in August of twenty twenty, we've uh vaccinated, excuse me, we have sterilized over five thousand. Uh pets for the public, which translates into far fewer uh unwanted strays. And so we also established a pet food pantry back in March of twenty twenty when people were going through financial hardships and uncertainty when the when COVID first broke. Um and we give out thousands of pounds of food every single month. Um we also have an incredible relationship with HCISD, which is keeping. You know, uh it's just a great partnership. Um so we have vet tech students um enrolled in that program. HCISD come to us on a weekly basis, multiple times uh a week, and they get to have hands-on practice that they otherwise would not have. Uh private practices do not have the the volume of surgeries that we do. Um it's just, it's just a totally different situation. Uh students can get their hands on five hundred pets in one afternoon. Uh or one morning during our clinics, uh and that that just wouldn't exist if if we didn't exist. So we're enriching the. Education of our students. We are providing a a massive service to the community as far as spay neuter goes and as far as vaccination goes. We're decreasing the population humanely. We're keeping that population safe and healthy. And as you can see, uh there, we are unmatched. We are unrivaled. Uh we've gotten national attention. In fact, as of this week, we actually got international attention um from one of our uh Facebook posts. Uh a magazine, a children's magazine from the United Kingdom reached out to us wanting to do an interview because they were so impressed at Harlingen. And what we can do with such a limited amount of resources. So it's really exciting. I've had multiple interviews on HPR. Uh we've. You know, we've had multiple uh Facebook posts uh where we reach over a million people organically. We get about a hundred thousand engagements every single week. Uh we have about thirty-five thousand followers, so we're talking about social media a little bit and engagement. Hey, uh. Uh just please give me a call. I'll point you to one of my staff who knows what they're doing, cuz I don't. Um but they can definitely uh help show the way. Um and you know, we look to to cities, right, like Edinburgh and McAllen, leading the way with their media. But they look to us and wish they could be us when it comes to serving the community and animal lovers. So we are the gold standard. But it is incredibly expensive. And as you can see, the annual contribution is about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars per year. The actual expense is about one million. Uh it's just over a million dollars. It's a million dollars fifty-three thousand or million. Uh fifty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and eighty. So it's it's quite a big gap that we have to bridge. So. We do a lot of great, you know, work with, you know, philanthropy. We do a lot of fundraising, we, you know, do a lot of monthly giving programs. We are constantly writing grants and submitting them for uh for approval from big national organizations, but. It's not enough. We need a lot more funding and it's uh it's a very difficult gap to bridge. And so. One of the things I wanted to touch upon was the fact that while we're doing all this, it's not a shelter that we're asking for more funding for. That's if I was just running a shelter, it'd be so easy. My job would be done. Uh that's it. But it's not just about the shelter. We're also running one of the highest-volume spay neuter clinics um and low-cost vaccination clinics in the entire valley. Um just to give a little bit of a picture, we have about what, two million people living here in the valley, more or less? Uh we have. That we know of, about a hundred and ten thousand animals entering shelters every single year within the four counties that are uh in the valley. And we only have access to maybe twenty to twenty-five uh vet clinics. And uh they're booked out forever. If anybody has had a sick cat or sick dog, you know how difficult it may be to to get in. So this isn't asking for more money so that we can buy more squeegees, more brooms, more bleach. That's not what we're doing. We don't wanna lose the ground that we've gained. Harlingen is leading the way. Um we had uh even the governor. Uh a few months ago made a video, shouted us out um because he knows that we're leading the way uh in animal welfare. In fact, we're the only no-kill community resource center. South of Austin. Uh it's ridiculous. And they have a budget, of course, that's a million times larger than what we could dream of, right? But uh and also have access to multiple vets in their facilities and we have access to none, we have to bring them in. So we are on the cusp of really. You know, consolidating all of this, and we don't wanna lose that ground. Because we wouldn't be just losing, you know, a no-kill shelter, right? If, you know, we're not just focused on that. Obviously, animal lovers are. It's a nonpartisan issue. Everyone loves animals. Everyone's been touched by an animal, but it's about the students. It's about where would they go if they didn't have uh access to our our clinics every month? Where would that and then that would trickle down. We're gonna be losing, well, there's already a vet shortage. There's already a vet tech shortage. It's they're in such high demand. Um even uh private practices are are competing, offering ninety thousand dollar signing bonuses to to vets that are fresh out of school. And they can't recruit. We're lucky enough to be able to recruit vets uh to come down on a weekly basis because they believe in our mission. They believe in Harlingen, especially after the commission. Uh thank you so much. We passed those really progressive ordinances back in February. It shows that this community has a commitment to making a difference and making a permanent one. And that's how we've been able to attract such talent uh to our community. So it's a really exciting time, and that's why we look to you to please consider giving us more. We need to find a way to bridge that gap. Because if we are struggling to just meet our day-to-day operational demands, we're never gonna be able to move on. And establish a modern facility for the twenty-first century that can be educational-focused, health-focused. We're gonna be constantly trying to fight just to stay alive. And as it is now, if we continue on our current track, we're going to have to reduce our services. It's just a a fact. Um we're able to operate now, but we will absolutely have to reduce those services. And that's not something that we wanna have to do, because again, we're not just, okay, well, the shelter's only open a certain amount of hours now. We're losing. A massive outlet, a massive uh uh resource when it comes to veterinary care. There's no other place that does what we do. We're we'd be losing basically a vet clinic. Uh so for a minimal investment, even if we ask for a hundred percent. Uh and that's not what we're asking for, not asking for a hundred percent, but just some gap that's much shorter for us to meet. For that minimal investment, what it would take comparable, um you know, if you had a vet clinic that was of comparable size when it comes to serving that many constituents. It would be a multimillion-dollar uh venture just to break ground, just to attract that talent. Um it would take a long time to get to where we are now, and we're already here. We already have the infrastructure in place. We have the staff in place. All we need to do is to keep it alive. And we keep that uh that access to care for the community and hopefully reduce the problem so that we're not just contributing to a cycle. Over and over again, because we're gonna spend the money one way or another. The city will spend the money one way or another, whether that's increasing the amount of animal control officers out there. Or. Actually aiming at the base of the fire and providing that service to the communities that that call volume will eventually go down. And we can be done with it. The goal is to put me out of business. We want to be put out of business. We want the amount of strays to go down. And the only way that we're gonna do that is by actually addressing it. Um it'd be a lot easier if I just said, no, yeah, it's fine, we'll be good. But we're not serving the community in an honest way if I'd say that. We have to uh address the root um of the issue. And so um a couple of more things I wanna touch on, mostly the social media. Um you know. Everything that we do, we talk about, we have to. And that's why we've been so successful in garnering that support. And that's why people look to us. Um not just locally, statewide and nationally. We got an award, uh the Humane Society of Harlingen received an award last year. Uh the Touchstone Award from Best Friends Animal Society. They're a national uh philanthropic organization that uh. Uh helps uh animal shelters all over the world, uh all over the country and all over the world. Uh we beat out every other shelter in the entire country. Uh our size. Um and we're number one for increasing the life-saving rate. So it's just incredible the fact that we're able to do this in Harlingen from our little tiny. Uh shelter in the corner that that image you saw, that that shelter represented was basically a actual size. If any of you've been there, it's tiny. Uh but we still manage to make it work. We make it work and we've served tens of thousands of residents. Um from all over the valley in Harlingen, and uh it's much more than a shelter. And if anybody has any questions about what it is that we do, why we're doing it. And how uh we could work together to make sure that we ensure that this ground isn't lost for our community, um I'd love to answer any questions.
I just wanna say you spoke slower at my Rotary meeting. And and uh quality man, quality work, the board.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
You're you're all, you do just wonderful stuff and I appreciate y'all.
Well, thank you so much. And you know, when it comes to looking at other cities.
Probably rescued. One parrot, one dog, and now over forty mini cats.
Yeah. Well, you want forty more?
I've got two on my porch we're trying to get.
Well, if you need a refill anytime soon, just let me know. Um but you know, when we're looking at other cities, you know, for for different, for different things. Uh programs that they have, initiatives, initiatives that they've taken, I'm pretty competitive. Uh and you know, I want Harlingen to stay the in the lead. And we're doing it. We're light years ahead of anybody else in our region. We're light years ahead of pretty much anybody else in the industry, given our resources. The, you know, we overperform. We overperform for our our community and it and it shows, it speaks volumes. There's. There's no other shelter who matches our team, and we're very grateful for the partnership that we have, and we just hope that we can continue that.
So first of all, thank you so much for everything that you do. We all see, you know, the wonderful work that you're doing in our community and we appreciate it. I do have a a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Um you mentioned that you are flying down vets from Houston.
Correct.
Can can you explain to me why um why that's necessary, why the vets in our community are not uh helping or or? It, I'm sure you've gone down this road and and tried to do that. Can you help me understand why we're have, why you're having to do that?
Yes, ma'am. So we have wonderful vets in our community. We just don't have enough of them. So they are incredibly inundated with all of their work that they're that they do on a day-to-day basis. They they have. To deal with not only vaccines and spay neuter, they're dealing with emergency cases, they're dealing with all kinds of trauma, and they're not dealing with just cats and dogs. They're also dealing with large animals. So. Uh you know, we do have local vets that help us quite a bit. We're blessed to have, you know, the help of, you know, the country vet. Uh Paws and Claws, Border Animal Hospital over in Wesco. We're very lucky to to work with many wonderful vets. We just need more of them, you know, and and that's the issue. Uh we would keep them busy as their sole co-client. We take in over four thousand animals a year. And on top of that, another. Maybe six to ten thousand animals we vaccinate, microchip and medicate every year from the public. Uh they would, the public wouldn't have access to that care. Otherwise, if they could afford an appointment, they could, and if they can actually get booked for an appointment. The the line, the waiting line will be really long and those animals would would not be healthy. So the, basically, the volume is just much higher in the valley than it is in other regions. And uh there are many factors for that. Obviously, the the poverty level in the valley is is a large factor, but it's also our climate. Uh we don't have. Winters, really, you know, so up in Minnesota, stray animals who are out in, you know, in 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 the wild, they don't make it. Here, they can live all year round and reproduce all year round. And so that's a massive issue. So in the past, you know, people i- in in, you know, my position, animal shelters would kind of scream at people, say, hey, you know, spay neuter, spay neuter. But that really was just words. What what are you gonna do when there's no clinic around? You know, and and our neighboring county and and uh Willacy County doesn't have a single vet. Um as far as I know, as of last week, they still don't have a single vet clinic. So you're you're talking about that disparity of access to care between us and places like Houston or or the Northeast especially. It's just not there. So we have to bring in uh vets from the outside who believe in the mission, who wanna. Address this issue and and serve underserved communities and make an impact, a lasting impact. So. We're very blessed to have access to to those relief veterinarians, but we just wanna keep them permanently. And we're we're on the cusp of hopefully. Uh persuading our relief vet to stay here, um you know, on a on a long-term basis. But even then, we're looking at a at a lead time of maybe six or eight months before those conversations can really happen. Um but we're trying, I'm I'm this close to bringing us a new vet to to town. Um but at the very least, we can, we can offer the community two to three days a week, at least for now, while um, you know, while we can keep the lights on.
Okay, thank you. So they are, there is just not enough. They're busy working. Many, many hours in their own clinics, and then they are contributing time to the shelter.
Absolutely. And we actually brought down um the dean for the veterinary school at A and M. Um a couple of times to to Harlingen, but most recently it was maybe two months ago. Uh his name is Dr. August. And we told him, hey, look, our community needs help. We're doing everything we can, but we're severely underfunded, we're severely overwhelmed, we need help. And we're hoping to maybe get a connection with A and M, but he said, hey, look, good luck, everyone needs a vet. You know, he said much more polite words. Uh he was very courteous. Um but the thing is that there's only about a hundred and thirty um graduates every single uh year from those vet schools. And the nearest one is is there in College Station. Well, they're getting. Preyed upon, right? Immediately, you know, everybody's fighting to get those vets and, you know, out of those a hundred and thirty some. Most of them are gonna go on to postgraduate work, or they're gonna go on to practice large animals, or they're gonna go to private practice, so. And they're competing for different areas, right? So Houston can pay more um than McAllen, Dallas can pay more than us and you know, so on and so forth. So. Um it's very difficult to find uh in a pool of vets, the vets that are gonna be suited for that position and wanna do it. So. Um you know, even if we had uh the the amount of uh resources of, you know, pet doctor or band field even larger, it'd be difficult to attract. Um so that's that's really, it's a vet shortage.
Okay. And my next question was going to be about um the educational programs that that you provide. Do you get any kind of sponsorships or contributions from the school districts that utilize the facility?
We do not. So we we do not get any um extra contributions. We um I sit on the, I guess, the advisory board for that Vet Tech uh program. Um the, what we do get is we're very excited for the extra hands-on, you know, it's, you know, it's mutually beneficial. Uh but we're an extension of the classroom. Uh you know, we get uh those, those students get access to to hands-on, you know. Animal care, they're administering vaccines, they're they're learning these medical protocols, they're learning all these things on a much faster pace than they uh would. Even at a private practice, they get to witness the the doctor and surgery. They get to uh assist with, you know, all kinds of related issues, you know. Whether it's recovery or nestatizing those animals. So it's a, it's an extension of the classroom.
I I would strongly suggest, cuz I know I talked to Lillian and Deli about that, because um some of my, some of my students are part of that Vet Tech program. They come in, so I was doing this, now I'm doing that. So so it's a great part of what you guys do. But I know for a fact um that the school district, that CTE, so they get money for that. So they they would not be able to offer that Vet Tech program without your, without your assistance. So it's only right that I feel. And hopefully I still have a job when I go back. But um I I I feel that that um that they should be help you on and and the funding for this. Because, I mean, a lot, a lot, like I said, I have several students in in years that have gone into that program. They get into, they graduate, and you know, it's a step toward. Like, you know, to to either veterinary school or Vet Tech, whatever it is. So I I strongly believe that HCISD should, um you know, contribute. Um to you and help you with this funding, cuz I know, like, I I'm I'm on your side. I I like, I think you guys are a credit to to the city. And I'm amazed at what you guys are able to do with your resources. And I'm in favor of of, you know, uh giving you some more support. Um but I also think that if HCISD is benefiting it, cuz they do get money. And my wife is nurse, but she's also a teacher at CTE and La Feria. And she's always saying how CTE is like one of the most heavily funded departments, cuz they get tons of money, because, you know, it's 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 the, you know. It's just, they do. So um I would strongly suggest getting into talks with the school district and they should be able to contribute at least something. Because they're benefiting from it. And I know you benefit from the students, that is true, but I mean, it should, they should be a little.
I completely agree. I like everything you're saying, Commissioner. It's great. Yeah, we're in, we're very blessed to have those those kids there. And the thing is that everything. We're trying to attract more people. We know how many people are from the valley, from Harlingen, who go off to school and they don't come back. And we don't want that to happen. We and we're trying to invest right now, because we know, even if it doesn't pay off right now, we're getting free. Uh you know, help in our our clinics. We're hoping that that's gonna spark that interest in those kids. To wanna come back and make an impact in their community. And that's what it's all about. It's making those ties stronger and it's, you know, hopefully investing and solving this problem once and for all. To wanna come back and make an impact in their community, and that's what it's all about, it's making those ties stronger, and it's, you know, hopefully investing and solving this problem once and for all. Um, you know, that's that's what we're looking for, in fact, all of our, all of our staff are from here, all our staff are, we're all from the valley, we're all from Harlingen, we're all from, you know. Uh, this region, and uh, we wanna make a difference here, and we want it, we want it to take over, and we can't do it forever, we know that, so we're trying to get the next generation involved, and. We've been very lucky um, to have those those kids, and we wanna expand it, we actually spoke with uh, the superintendent. Um, when Dr. August came, and uh, you know, we, we know that if we lose this program. Uh, we lose our spay neuter access because we can't afford to keep the lights on, uh, that access for those students is gonna decrease dramatically.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's all we have, right, Gabe?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, and so that's it for tonight's meeting, thank you all for being so.